Here.
More? Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Men, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, and to the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to interviews. Rita Young, you want to come up and tell us why you want to continue on the airport board, please? And anything else that you'd like to tell us?
All right. I'd like to continue on the airport board because I think I'm just starting to finally understand the language of the board, how much is really all involved with it. I think most people in the community just recognize the commercial, but there's a lot more with the renting of the farmland, the rental properties, just the whole, everything. Just like in any council or Board of Trustees, there's always a lot more to it than you realize. And the general community probably doesn't have the idea of how much is involved with it. Also, I good leadership, not only on the Board of Trustees at this point, but also at the airport, serving the airport. So for those who don't, I would like to continue. I believe as a citizen in our city, you need to get back to your city.
Hey, thanks for your service. I appreciate it.
I thought I might get a question about my attendance. I have missed two, but those two absences, I did use the airport to leave the city.
I was going to ask you who your favorite airport manager was, but you've already clarified that, so.
(laughing). Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you for letting me serve.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is, uh, Noel Jacobs. Not here. Okay, we'll go on to, uh, Art Center Board of Trustees, Gail Ammet. Tell us why you would like to serve.
I have a home in Sioux City. Probably Morningside College is my second home, and the Art Center would be my third home. This has evolved naturally over the years. First, when I first moved here almost 20 years ago, um, I was a casual user of the Art Center. I like to go to the gallery talks on the opening nights because, um, hearing how creative people conceive of their works and, and offer their works to us is very helpful. Um, so over the years, I, um, gained more and more familiarity with the Art Center, with the staff there, with the artists. I started buying art from local artists. The, the local art scene has simply become an important dimension of, of my life as it is for so many other people. I've been on the, um, Sioux City Art Center Association Board of Directors for five years now. First, my first year was, um, as a presidential nomination, a sort of probationary year. Then I went into my first three-year term, and I'm, I've just completed the first year of my second term. I've also, in the past year, been, been serving on the executive council of that board. So for me, the, the application to the Board of Trustees seems like a natural evolution in that process. I would be very honored to serve at that level.
Other questions?
Well, I, I see quite a few of the Art Center events and stuff and enjoy your engagement and I appreciate your, your application.
Thank you. Would this be, uh, is it Helen Glazer's replacement? And, and is, would this appointment be simply for the remainder of her term, or would it be a, a new three-year term?
It would be for the, it would be till 12:31 of 17.
Correct, so the rest of the year, yeah.
Thank you.
Then you could apply again at that point. Anything else?
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mary Martin, Transit Advisory Board. Come right up that mic, Mary. You're good right there.
I really enjoyed being on the Transit Advisory Board, and I have a lot of experience with fixed routes and para-transit, too. And I've tried all year to find somebody to get on the board because we're short a member, and I knew my term was up in June, so I decided I'd come here and reapply. Because I didn't find anybody that would want to be on that. I asked everybody on fixed routes, and every time I was down at the MLK, to, if they, if they would like to do that.
So we'd have to waive the rules for her, correct? Because this would be her third term. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, well, thank you. We'll let you know.
Replying, no doubt, reapplying.
All right, we will go on through 14C. Consider them passing unanimously unless a council member asks for a separate roll call vote. You want to speak on the item that, read it as, as I read it, please come to the podium and state your name and address so it can be used for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, please state your name and address. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
On 5th, 2017. Four is a resolution authorizing an IEDA application for the targeted jobs withholding tax credit program for superior industrial mechanical. Five is a resolution approving a salary schedule for a seasonal labor recreation and events facility department personnel.
Bob, I have a question. Um, seasonal is what? Like, from what to what?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Would this is, the one for Parks, if it's for Parks and Rec, it's for lifeguard, lifeguard two.
Yep, okay.
So we'd be, we're proposing to increase from 10 to 1050 in order to fill enough water safety instructors for our swimming lessons program.
So this is just for lifeguards?
Lifeguard two.
Yes, lifeguard two.
Right.
Okay, so, so I'm seeing here that, um, the lions house Sioux has, has their per hour at 11, and we're just raising ours to 1050. Do you think that?
We have a nice little waiting list. If this gets approved, that we will have enough instructors to fill our swimming lessons program. So we're happy with 1050.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Next is a resolution authorizing an economic development to apply for the IDOT for revol, rail revolving loan and grant program, funding for a study for a development of a transload facility. Seven's a resolution authorizing payment to interstate mechanical for construction of the direct digital control system upgrade project at Long Lines Family Recreational Center. I forgot to check with my office if there was a bond, so I'm going to stay in on that. Eight is a resolution granting permit for, to FiberCom to operate the underground cable in the Grandview Park area. Nine are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporary closing various streets in the downtown area on July 19th, 2017, between 4:30 and 10:30 PM for the Rivercade Parade Ice Cream Social and Staging Area. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets near Grandview Park between 12:00 AM July 1st and 5:00 AM July 2nd, 2017, for the Saturday and the Park Festival. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving agreement with Confluence for a conceptual plan for the vacation and development of the property at 1521 Dale Street. B is a resolution approving the contract and bond with Bainbridge Construction for the Ravine Park Watershed Upload BMPS Project. C is a resolution awarding a towing and wrecking service contract to Meyer Towing for three years with the option of an extension. I know you, Myers in the audience, you're, you're down $30 or whatever on this contract. You're okay with the contract?
Hi, my name is Jeff Dave. Uh, my address is 405 Romans Road, Sioux City. Um, I was expecting some stiff competition on the bid, and I intended to keep my service with the city.
Okay.
Um, I do not feel that there will be a problem with our performance.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
D is a resolution approving amendment number one to the development agreement with SW Properties for the property at 5855 Sunny Brook Drive, Wazinski Eye Clinic. E is a resolution awarding a contract to Sioux City Engineering Company for the Pierce Street Reconstruction Project. Is this without the alternate for 30th Street?
It is, I think.
Glenn Ellis, City Engineer. The 30th Street intersection is a separate project that was bid last week and will.
No, no, I said that wrong. I'm sorry.
Oh, 27th Street intersection. The, this is the base bid, which has the 27th Street intersection taking place next year. Be, the bid alternate had the intersection this year, and that would be the additional $83,000, um, to the contract if we did the alternate.
But you're not recommending that, right?
We are not. We, due to the, the timings compressed it all into this year, we did not change any of the working days, um, for the contractor. That and the, um, the additional cost of the $83,000, we're are concerned with that, moving forward with the.
The changing the timeline for the whole project and pushing that, or just that portion of it? Because what I thought that I asked in previous meetings was that I just wanted to see if the order of, of construction or, you know, that intersection could take place in an earlier part of the project. That's what I was asking, not the whole project to be done sooner. Can you clarify?
Right, yeah. So the base bid has everything from 24th Street up to the intersection being completed this year, and then the intersection at 27th up to 29th being completed in 2018. That was the base bid. We issued an alternate that had 24th up to 27th, including the intersection being completed this year. So moving that intersection up from 2018 schedule up to the 2017 schedule. And then the remainder at front of the hospital being completed in 2018.
So 24th to 27th is what's going to be this year?
Just south of the intersection. So it would not include the intersection this season.
Correct. And then next season is 27th to what, 29th?
29th, correct.
And that includes the intersection?
That would include the intersection.
And then, what's the last component?
That is the last piece of it.
Right there?
Yeah.
And so my question is, can you do the 29th to 27th first, include the intersection?
Could we do that this year? No, because of the utilities, drain to the south, we would need to have the south sections from 24th completed before, yes.
How does it drain now?
Drains to the south. We wouldn't be.
Oh, I know. That's what I, so it doesn't ma, it, it, it doesn't matter. I'm not going to say anything. I learned to shut up today. But we, we never seriously looked at anything other than what we engineered the first time. We just rebid the thing. That's all we did. We put an alternate in here. We're still way over budget, and, but yet we're recommending it.
We issued it based on the direction of council for your consideration. You can
I understand.
Proceed and.
But you're, you never looked, I asked that last time. Why can't you build it going on? The dr, water's still going to drain into the same pipe it drains into. It doesn't, it just blows my mind. Do you think the sewer's not going to run and hook into the existing ones? That's how you do a two-phase project, guys, just so you know. It doesn't matter which one you did first or second.
And that's my lack of understanding.
The coordination, the coordination would have, to, to do that, to put a plan together to bid it as you directed or indicated of doing the 27th to 29th first, we would have recommended that we would have delayed the bidding of the project and put together a redesign because of that. Phasing of it would have required additional connections, bypassing of piping. That would have been more time-consuming to put a plan together to allow the contractor to bid it in the timeframe that had been allowed. So it would have, we tried to get it in best timeframe that we could to keep the project moving this year. We probably would have had to delay the bidding a month to six weeks to.
We're already way behind on this project. We're already way behind for lots of different reasons.
Correct.
None the least is that your engineers had a terrible estimate.
Yeah, I mean, the first bid rec.
And you had a terrible completion date. Now, you can argue all you want. We've lost two months here because of bad engineering already and bad completion dates. And now so we've lost two months.
And was it ever looked at, why is it, why is it so much more challenging to include, if you're going from 24th to 27th, to go just beyond that intersection, so you can get that done and completed as soon as possible? Because then, not just for business's sake, but I mean, then you're opening up another intersection you're not.
To go beyond.
And again, I'm not a construction person or an engineer. I'm just asking questions.
So you're saying to go beyond 27th?
Correct. Because you said it's just south of the intersection.
Yeah, we're stopping just south.
And I'm saying, is there a way to go just north of the intersection?
That, that's what the alternate bid was.
Correct, that would include that.
That's what the alternate bid was for $80,000.
So for the $80,000 is just giving us another 50 feet on the other side of the intersection?
The intersection, yeah.
Because they didn't bid it. If they'd have ju.
I, I just don't understand why the bid couldn't have changed the project.
Mr. Nelson?
I'm Steve Nelson with Nelson Construction Development at 2805 West Fourth. Obviously, this affects us on that corner and Hy-Vee, both of us. And what we're up against, obviously, when you, this goes through two years, we're going to shut that intersection, basically, with our place. We have one line, means of access for this year and one means of access next year, which is not good for us, opening up a new business. Hy-Vee's going to be in the same boat. So we are willing, as owners, if we can help to defray some of that cost, pay an additional $30,000 toward that project to ho, help offset that, uh, and get it built this year. Because we're going to have construction costs increasing if we wait till 2018, and we just would like, if we can help, we'd offer $30,000 toward that 80-some thousand. Yep, we'll put our own money in it.
I'm new, guys. Can that be negotiated, or what can we do? I guess, because I, I understand your play. And can you tell me, I'm looking at a map right now, where you are again, and where that one entrance?
Southeast corner. And they'll have to enter off the alley.
Southwest of.
Southeast corner. And they'll have to enter on the alley between Pierce and Nebraska. They'll have to come in the backside of their business for two years.
Well, their access, I believe, will be from 27th Street, and we're not, the project doesn't extend that far east to impact their, their access point.
Our access is on, actually on 27th. The only way they'd be able.
North side, yeah, right there on 27th.
Right. So the only way we can access it when that intersection's tore up would be from the east through there.
The reason they're arguing is they want to be able to access from the east and the west because it is off of 27th, but you're going to make sure that they're open and not be able to get traffic to it. And that, they want to coincide their construction with your construction. That's, that's their whole deal.
That was our original intent, to open up the same time the street was completed.
Yeah, and the way the bid is put together, the cost would be $83,000 to, to accommodate that.
To go just the other side of the intersection, right?
Well, now it only costs 53,000.
Well, however.
And have we approached Hy-Vee if they'd be interested in incentivizing or doing any of that either? I mean.
No, we've had discussions locally and corporate with them in terms of the impacts to their access. They will have access off of 27th and 26th at all times. Their main concern is for deliveries. They recognize their access off of Pierce will be impacted through the project, but, no, we haven't had any discussion to see if they would participate in any costs. Because they were, they would have access at all times.
And the biggest problem we have with them, Hy-Vee, as we spoke with them, it becomes a dead-end street coming up 27th. So now it, it's, there's access, obviously, but it's, now it's an inconvenient convenience to get through there, so.
Dave, Glenn, I'm curious, did we stop at 27th Street because of the timing or the length of the construction? In other words, could we, could we physically, by the end of the year, get through 24th through 27th, including the intersection?
Well, what, what they basically did as the, as the alternate was compress, allow them to get into the intersection before completing the section between 27th and 26th. As it was originally done, they had to have that done before they could get into the intersection in order to compress the timeline. They're going to be able, we're going to have to let the contractor work on both of those sections at the same time.
Is it, Mayor, is it possible that we could approve the base bid and then negotiate funding?
There must be way the two smart men at the end of the table think, because that's what Bob just asked me. What can I say?[1268.16][1268.16](laughing). You wouldn't do any, you wouldn't, you'd be approving it by doing nothing, so then you'd just have to instruct the city manager to try to negotiate.
Try to negotiate.
Totally, yeah.
We'll worry the base bid, and then we'll circle around with you, and if we can negotiate some cost sharing, we'll then add the.
We can do it as a.
Very good.
Well, and I wonder, too, if the hospital, were they okay with closing that intersection so they can't get to Stone Park or?
They've been very involved in the project.
That part, yeah, I mean, I know they're a good partner. I'm just thinking of ambulances and other routes.
That's all been worked through.
How long is the base bid good for? I mean, if, I mean, how much, is there, do we have a limited period of time to negotiate?
Yeah, we bid on May 23rd, so we'd have 30 days, June 23rd.
We'll award the base contract.
We could award the, yeah, we could.
And do it as a change order to add the, so it'll be.
Oh, okay.
So we would be awarding the contract, getting the contract signed, and then we'll do it as a change order.
Okay, then.
We're going to add the 83,000.
I understand. Thanks.
No.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Glenn.
Alex, I'll answer one of your questions. The hospital's involved with our conversation as well. It doesn't matter to them because they have access. 27th Street's going to be shut down at one period of time, so they have access off of Stone Park Boulevard. So they have no incentive to do it this year or next year. It's, they're, they're good with both.
Yeah.
So they're.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, guys.
They picked those up.
Thank you.
Once you have a bond, it's good for the price. So it doesn't matter what you add as a trade for the job. They audit the, at the end of the job, that's all. So you're, you're covered no matter what.
So does this require any?
Yeah.
No, no, okay. We know where we're at.
Eleven is approved total checks issued for the reporting period, May 17th, an amount of 8,000, I'm sorry, $8,230,404.45. Twelve are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, banter permits. See the list and come forward if you have questions. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have questions. Fourteen, see the receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. That concludes the consent agenda. We'll vote on that electronically, I hope, today. Alex, you vote?
Sorry, I figured the electronic thing.
Yes. Oh, there it goes.
Passes four to zero. Fifteen's a hearing and resolution granting an underground electrical easement to Mid-America Energy in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area property at 5931 Pier, Pershing Drive. I'll move it.
Second.
Hold it and out.
Mine's not even lit, lit up.
Can you hold it down and not take it? It's not taking it.
Aye.
It's, it's not working. You have to, yeah.
Greckin?
It was.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Cape French?
Aye.
Sixteen's a hearing resolution proving construction documents for the Outer Drive North and Floyd Boulevard Trail Construction Project. Did we get this one bid with native grass before bid, or are we just putting plain old grass seed down?
I was going to ask that same thing, and I know Matt just left.
I don't recall the ans, I know you asked me that the last time we had this go out. I will have to follow up on that. I don't recall the answer right now.
Same type of project before, and he was looking at other areas, but the mayor had brought up, and I know I'm in agreement with that, that any of these future projects, we need to start planting that rather than.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, let me check with the engineers.
We need to go to low mo.
Yeah, we can work with Kelly and Matt on that.
Please send that to me, too.
Passes four, zero. Seventeen's an ordinance amending chapter 12.18 entitled Construction Slight Erosion and Sediment Control Municipal Code. I'll move first reading.
Second.
How soon is this going to affect? Because this does have an effect on some of our smaller jobs, I think, right?
You're asking for the effective date. Um, I believe it has to have three readings, is that correct?
It's what?
Three readings, correct, until it goes.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, have you notified the construction industry of the changes? That's all I'm asking.
Um, at this time, it's an ordinance change. We, they've actually already been submitting their permit authorizations, um, so there, there shouldn't be any concerns in the construction community because all the project managers have been submitting their permit authorization. And that particular change, um, requiring that the permit authorization is submitted to the city will prevent contractors from beginning construction prior to having an approved DNR permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Passes four, zero. Anyone oppose waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Cape French?
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Passes four, zero. Eighteen's an ordinance amending municipal code. To add definition to local selected bidder. First consideration passed June 5th, 2017. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Mayor and council, the definition about local bidder and local preference was updated to be more specific upon the council's request, um, to include a definition for Sioux City and Metropolitan, statistical area, and the counties that would be encompassed in that area.
I don't know, is there any other thought around this? I don't know. I'm, I'm just curious how others feel. I've read through it again, and I'm just curious, Bob, what are your thoughts as the city manager? I mean, do you see any, any thing that would be better? Or, I mean, we heard concerns, the mayor had concerns last meeting. I mean, I, I think I see the angles, I just don't know.
The concerns we had in the past was that we just needed a better definition of what was considered local preference, and this does that.
And as far as percentage, do you own an opinion?
I was comfortable with the percentage as it was. Percentage is always a little more difficult because a percentage on a small bid isn't very much money, but you get up into larger projects, you could be talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. thousands of dollars.
Well, and that's why I wondered about the tiered system. I mean, that other communities have done, you know what I mean? Up to a certain dollar amount, it's two, a certain one, it's five, another one's 10.
We could certainly look at that. At this point, I'm not comfortable making a recommendation on that. I think what we have is good.
Because, because I'm with you. I, I think two percent is very relative to the amount.
Yeah.
And that's why I think it was Cedar Rapids that did, if I remember right, in the, in the reading, was that they had the, I think it was two, five, and 10 percentage, but it was just all based on.
The confusion, Alex, for me previously, and we had discussed this a number of times over the last couple of years, was the language said city council must approve the purchase.
Yeah, and I.
And, and this certainly fine with the definition of local bidder and, and the May change, so I think it's, I think it'll work out very well.
And to your point, maybe you don't have to adjust the percentage if you change the word to May. You know what I mean?
Yep, exactly.
I understand that as well. It gives you discretion.
Yep.
So maybe that's, you're, you're fine just leaving it. You know, 5% deterring them, you know, and I worry about that as well. And it's like, gosh, here we are trying to give them preference and have a lower threshold, right? I mean, is that kind of what you're thinking, too? It's, so we're making it advantageous for other communities so that they can be considered local and we can offer them the bid, but they're not returning the favor? And I think that that's disheartening. But who knows if they change that? You know what I mean? You can see what they would award and what they would do. I don't have looked back at their bid structure, but. Maybe we just want to do second reading and.
Yeah, I don't want to go third.
Huh?
I'd like Dan to be here for third because he had some concerns, too.
Oh, that's a good point. That's a great point. Okay.
Passes four, zero. We'll do third reading next time. Citizen concerns. Any citizens have concern, please come forward to the microphones, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Fran Palmersheim, 4437 Springfield Street. I'm the president of the Parkton Rec Advisory Board, and I just wanted to thank the council for their approval of our splash pad up at Leeds this weekend. That place was just packed. I talked to people from Merrill, from Anthem, and it's not just Sioux City. We had some comments that only the young people would use it, but I saw people there from age two up to probably maybe 70, maybe even older than me. That's hard to believe, but.
Up to how old? How old?
Up to about 70.
Okay.
About our age, Bob.
Bob was out there? I was going to say.
But the other thing I wanted to mention, too, we had Leeds Day this weekend. I think, and I could be mistaken, I think all the council was in the parade, maybe there was someone missing.
He wasn't either.
Oh, you didn't make it? Well, I missed you then.
I was out, thank you. I can tell.
And I also want to say, you know, some, some of the people in town, thank you people, sit by a swimming pool or sit in your house watching movies all weekend and stuff. But we had the Leeds Parade, we had the 185th Open House last night. Talked to Dan down at the concert down at the pavil, at the.
We had the Bandits game, but not very many people showed up there, Fran, so.
Pardon, you went with that?
I said, we had the Bandits game, but not very many people showed up for that after everything else that was going on.
Yeah.
Bob, Willie was playing. Willie was at Hard Rock.
Willie was?
Yeah.
But anyway, you know, and on behalf of Leeds, you know, the people up there appreciate that you people take an interest in them. Leeds, some of the people in Leeds have been there for many, many, many years, and they're convinced that Leeds should have been the town, Sioux City would be the suburban. You've, you've heard that story for years. It's not that way, but they're very, they're very appreciative of what the parks have done, but what you people also have done. And I just wanted to say that. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to add to that, too. I was out to this splash pad this weekend, and you're so right about young and old, and they were having a great, great time, you know, and that shelter is perfect, that, you know, families can sit there and watch their kids. And there's a porta pott out there, that was kind of a big issue for quite a while there on Facebook. You know what? I'm just excited that they're, that the whole community is taking part in it, and that's what it's all about, so.
And the whole park, the whole park is full, not just the splash pad, all around the park.
Yeah.
I, I guess. I love it.
Yeah. It's perfect, so.
All right, anyone else?
My name is Lacey Bryce. I live at 2802 Boyd Street at the north end Riverside. I am on a fixed income, and I have things written out, and having only three minutes, but a lot to say, in reflecting on my visit last week, when perhaps I, okay. One person lives by hope. A city cannot say, we hope by 24 million grand and 3% to 4% tax relief and 35 years to pay it back, or some such approximation, because I am hope we hope, and just disregard what is going on. I think this way. Enter any business who would like to come into Sioux City to profit from the area in any way that they sign an ironclad prenup. Coming in in a big box form and then leaving, I don't have to tell you who, leaves us gasping for air as well as money. I am grateful, oh, that's just an idea, prenup. I don't think, I know that Sioux City residents are more poor than rich. Lot suffer from emotional, physical, financial handicaps. There is generation upon generation of addiction and alcoholism here. And so when you do bring up business, businesses that may appeal to the baser resources of a person, I disapprove. I do not think that the cabaret rockers will miss the signs of desperation when they roll in in hordes in their limos because of the fact that they will not all roll in at midnight. A park-marked facade has never encouraged green dollars. I am here to argue on the behalf of people who are trying, and possibly on a fixed income, to keep their residences. I have more depressing things, as they were called, to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
There's one in the back.
Thank you for letting me talk to the council and other members. I'm Jill Corey. I live at 4605 Correctionville Road, and I had approached the council during the coffee about, with the council about the different things that are going on on Correctionville Road between Green Avenue and Bacon Creek. And it's kind of a safety thing. When I talked to the mayor, he suggested maybe a sidewalk. And I got, I started talking about that to friends, and he was saying, they were saying that you can't ride bicycles on sidewalks, it's against city ordinances.
I didn't say, no, no, I didn't say sidewalk, I said a trail.
Well, I was interpreting it as a, as a sidewalk.
No, no.
But.
I meant trail because to get, get the bikes off the street is what I meant.
It is, it is posted as a trail already, going on that way.
I'm talking about getting them off the street and putting them on a trail.
Correct.
Out to Bacon Creek from Green Avenue.
You mentioned, when we were talking, Mayor, you were talking about if there was any, what do you call it, ravines off of the road there? And for about the first block, once you get onto Correctionville Road from Green Avenue, there's ditches for the first, on both sides. And then one has a creek on one side and one doesn't. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why it was never designed or built out there is because there really just isn't room for it. Our second part of our conversation, when we were drinking coffee, was trying to give thought to reducing the speed from 35 to 30. And it's not everywhere, it's just on Green Avenue to Bacon Creek, because that's where most traffic is. And I'm just, you know, appealing to the council to consider that. 30 miles an hour, and I think with Dave Carney, we were talking, if you tell somebody posting a speed limit of 35, they're going to do 35. If you posted it 30, most people will abide by that. Not everybody, but most will. And I've noticed that, I really think that a speed study should be done to determine a lot of people that don't do 30 miles an hour. And so all I'm suggesting is let's try that, do a speed study. That sign outside of my place is not very accurate. And so that's the only thing I was asking for.
Yeah, there's a digital sign outside that, that records speeds, and there was a speed study done, I believe, three years ago, and we took the data off the sign recently, all showing that it mirrored what was taken three years ago, that 35 is just slightly below the 85th percentile speed. We will dig it, it is on our list with traffic counters. It's, we have other areas, we get a lot of requests for speed studies, and right now we're getting our traffic counters have to get serviced, so they're, we don't have access to them right now. When we get them back, we'll start conducting our speed and traffic counts for the summer, so, and it will be on the list, it's just kind of down the list. But we are looking to evaluate what we could for either a sidewalk or a trail through that area.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Well, and I would definitely think, to your point, the trail versus the sidewalk, I mean, people are, a lot of people go to Bacon Creek to ride their bike, and you know, want to give that option. And I don't know if a bike lane or anything, more space, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like at one point there was a, a trail from Witt up to Bacon Creek, but that looks like that didn't follow Correctionville Road, really. It was.
Different route.
Yeah, I was just trying to look it up on, Matt had just emailed it to me today, so I haven't had a chance to really look at it, but I was just trying to look at my phone, it's a little small to read, so.
Hey, Dave, can you, in the meantime, to Mr. Corey's point, our concern about the speeding and waiting for you to do the traffic study or update accounts, can we coordinate with the police?
We've had PD, PD's been out there. We had a meeting.
They are doing radar checks.
He came out and met with myself and Rex Mueller and Rex.
Great, thank you.
Rex has had guys out there, they just have not, they haven't had any.
Haven't seen anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
They haven't, they haven't caught anything, so.
I appreciate it.
So, and like them, they get a lot of requests for speed, speed enforcement, and.
We know that.
No surprise.
Especially on weekends, I would think, too. I'm sure that's when it gets utilized maybe the most, or weekends, weekdays.
Well, I don't have the days and times they were out there, but I know they were out there several times. I think Rex himself went out there and did some traffic monitoring, and he just wasn't finding anything that was justifiable to, to write ticket.
So it probably has to be a little bit more than hit and miss.
Yeah.
And, and, and your help, your input would be very helpful if you were to, when you think the traffic is bad and the speed is too high, to call the communication, send to the routine number and just ask them, because even the district car can go out there and, and sit and run some radar. And I, and I do think that they, a uniform car and uniforms in the area, again, have this wonderful capacity to influence the behavior of people, so.
And they are, they are, they are doing it, too, by the way.
Good.
Controlling it. I was leaving just yesterday, and one of the SUVs, not the cars, had pulled somebody over, and so after the person that left, I asked him to come by, that person was doing 51 miles an hour.
Did you give him a ticket or a warning?
I'm pretty sure they got a ticket. He wasn't very happy with them, I know that. And so I told him I appreciated that, but my, my thought process is.
What?
Coming down Correctionville Road, going east from Greenville, you're coming down a hill, and then you level off, and then you go up to Bacon Creek. Well, coming out of Bacon Creek, you're coming right back down a hill, so you're picking up speed both ways. And the only way to manage it, I think, even though we disagree, is to lower the speed just to 30 miles an hour. I have a lot of people agreeing with me, beside yourself, Dave. And I'm just asking the council, I, you said yourself, council would be more sympathetic to me, and I'm hoping that they will be, to lower that speed to 30. And because it's, if it weren't for Bacon Creek, we wouldn't have this problem. You know, it's just, it's just the nature of the, what's going on.
And, and that's why we need the data, Jill.
Yeah, that, that machine out there, somebody can be going by at whatever speed, and it's over the speed, and it doesn't even come on. And we really need a real, true reading of what really is going on out there. But the police are doing their job, they really are. They do a good job out there, it's just that sometimes we don't see them pull somebody over.
Sure.
And, but it's just, it's, it's an open road, it seems like, but, you know, there's, the last time we had a meeting with Mr. Carney, my neighbor across the street for the situation and moved. And so it's, it's causing, and we got people coming, that's a pretty condensed area, there's a lot of people living in that area, and we need the protection of a speed limit that's more accommodating that area, just that small area. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Lacey Bryce, Boyd Street Riverside. Could a stoplight be put in on the hill? It's just an idea.
Thank you.
Dave is a big fan of more stoplights, I know that.
Council concerns?
The only thing I want to do is follow up with Dave on that water pressure issue on Christie Road. We were talking at coffee with council, and Brad said that he was going to talk to the fire department. I know what he said the water pressure was at Christie and.
Sunnybrook.
Sunnybrook. But he was going to follow up and see if the fire department could do that. Do you know if we ever did that?
I have no idea if you contacted them to get a pressure test.
Would you? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So I can, I've shared our conversation with the gentleman who called me from the intersection.
You think we have 140 pounds anywhere?
No.
That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, Brad didn't think so. I mean, it was a.
The measured, the measured static pressure at Sunnybrook and Christie was 113 pounds. It's, for every foot is 2.3 PSI, or, excuse me, every PSI is 2.3 feet of water. That subdivision is 70 feet higher than that intersection, so it drops by about 33 pounds, taking it down to about 80 is what their pressure is. And, and we have a GAS layer that we can estimate with the pressures by the house, and it also, it can form, incentive it should be around 80.
His, his argument was, the gentleman I spoke to was that normally it's 65, appliances are rated at 85, and, and he had some plumber tell him it was as high as 140, but I shared that formula with him, so he understands that completely.
Well, I have some of the highest, seriously, water pressure in the city because I'm off the North Tower and I'm so much lower, and I do have a pressure reducer, or it blows the pipes out of me.
That was going to be, the next thing is that it's required if you have certain pressure.
And I, I shared that with him as well, so he understands.
But I don't, I'm, there aren't very many people that have that problem in town.
No.
And his explanation was there were three or four in that neighborhood, plus some businesses on Sunnybrook, so I, I'm just sharing what I was told and.
But I'm, I'm not saying it didn't, but.
It wouldn't have anything to do with any development that's occurring, is my.
No, the, the, the loop water main that was put in at the Dan Hisser Road environment, I mean, your highest water pressure is going to be in the middle of the night when nobody's using water, no water's moving through the system.
Because the tower's filling.
Yep. And when it's moving, your water pressure drops. When everyone starts using, everybody's pressure drops, so.
Well, and that's, he did bring up the issue about the water tower, could that have any impact? He also.
Well, I mean, it, our pressure will be higher at about 3:00 in the morning because the tower, the tank fills.
Sure.
I know I'm a dumb accountant, but I know how it works, and it fills the pressure on those lines, and that's why our neighborhood, when they did, when they redid the water line, we used to come off of the Grandview tank up Floyd, and they took us off when they redid our street, and they put us on the north side. And we all, that's part of your project, I've had to change mine since, but you have, we had to put pressure-reduced valves in because the pressure was so high coming off that tower. But you have, we had to put pressure reduce valves in because the pressure was so high coming off that tower. So yeah, as that tank fills up in Morningside, which by the way, they designed it wrong, it's never filled up, but I'm not going to go there today because that's- Am I right, Mark? You can't fill that tower in Morningside. You can get about three foot to the top, because they designed it wrong way back when we did it.
When the water is at the highest level in a tank, can it cause, can it cause some kind of surge? That question was posed to me as well, and I, that would-
Yeah, technically could it, but I mean, it would be, when there's nothing really moving in there, your, your pressure is going to, it's not going to be a-
Be stable.
It's not going to be a huge surge. Your biggest surge is going to be when you have a high flow going and all of a sudden, for some reason, when, like, say you have a water main break and you have a ton of water flowing out and we got to shut that valve, that's when you're going to get your best surge because you're going to get-
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's it, mayor. Thank you.
Well, mayor, congratulations.
Let's get everybody out Saturday. Ron, I need all that help.
You guys all hear that out there? Are we still doing five dollar tickets? Is that true?
We're doing five dollar in the balcony and seven dollars anywhere in the bowl. How much cheaper, I guess, cheaper than a movie. How much cheaper can I make it?
Free popcorn, that's what I say, but, you know.
You got to talk to the convent, the Tyson people. I don't control the free popcorn.
Well, I want to congratulate you on that. And Saturday, the, is this the final game or is this?
Semi-final.
Okay.
I wondered that too.
Still a chance hosting the championship?
If Texas beats Amarillo, we, we'll have the championship in Sioux City, if we win.
If we win.
We got to win. It's hard to beat anybody four times in a season.
So we have to win and Texas has to beat Amarillo.
Yep.
Well, good luck.
If we'd have won in Kansas City, it would, we would be hosting, so.
Oh, right.
We brought it on ourselves.
Well, okay, the other thing I want to remind everybody is this weekend is Awesome Biker Nights and it's going to be another great weekend. And I just encourage everybody to go out there. I, it's going to be great entertainment for the whole weekend. And I just want to welcome everybody to Sioux City that comes from out of town.
Yeah, um, I don't think I have any concerns. I was just going to say, yeah, I was going to say that, um, I, I was looking at, obviously Awesome Biker Nights coming up this weekend. That's awesome, but, get it?
I got it.
Okay, good, I'm glad. But what I was just going to say is, I really hope that people watch the news or read the paper or watch online of all the incredible stuff going on in our community because I, it gets me so angry when people say there's nothing going on because this weekend was pretty filled with some awesome, some great events, some really just fantastic events, like, obviously we're in the Leeds Parade, you know, the Fran mentioned, and then after that, going out to the one eighty-fifth, that open house was, it was incredible. And I, I mean, estimates, I think the Journal said the estimate was something like five thousand or give or take, right? So somewhere around there, but I think I saw it, Senator Ernst made it, right? I think I saw her out there and a couple others. But it was just, it's such a cool chance to really see all of those planes and what they do. And not only that, but I just was filled with a lot of pride, you know, for our community. I think that having that in our backyard is, is a pretty awesome thing. And so I'm glad that the community is able to embrace that and be out there. And so I know I saw a lot of people.
The people that you brought out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. And one of the things I did, I actually might bring them to a meeting, so I'll get to introduce all of you at some point. But I actually, Morningside has approximately sixty international students that attend and some of them stay over the summer. And so I sent an email out to one of them that works in our office and she actually brought out four friends that are all international. So we're talking from Brazil, from Colombia, from Venezuela, and one was from Holland. And they were sending their parents back in like Colombia and Venezuela, all these pictures of them in cockpits of tankers and like up next to fighter jets. And I just, I was trying to imagine what their parents would think, like, I don't think that they can do that with their government's military. And here we have them in the cockpit of our like multimillion dollar aircraft, but they were beside themselves and I know a lot of kids had fun too, but... But I'm hoping the international students come here. They're very curious in our government and want to see that process too. So hopefully I'll get to introduce all of you at some point. And then after that, I went to Asian Fest and did another thing. I went out there and had some great food and, and then it was really hot. So went and took a nap, went and took a nap, so I had plenty of energy to cheer up the Bandits, so it was a lot of fun. But it was a great weekend, a lot of things.
And to your point about activities, I will say this about, there are a lot of great activities going on every weekend, but I want to thank Downtown Partners. They put out on their website, they put out exactly what's going on in the community from week to week. And, and it's a great reminder to folks about what goes on and all the great activities, a wide variety and selection of activities to pick from. So if anybody wants to, they can always go to the Downtown Partners website and, and pick up on that information. They give a great description and, and-
I think they have a newsletter too.
Yeah, yes, they do. And I think you can sign up for that and probably get it automatically, so. So just a shout to Downtown Partners and thank them because they do a lot of good things too.
That's all I got, mayor.
Aye.
Aye.